December third, two thousand and nineteen, Board of Selectment meeting. We just finished with our executive session. Sorry if we were a little bit late. And here we are, so now we'll commence the regular meeting. All right, first item on the agenda is public comments. Anybody has any comments that are not on the agenda?
No, I don't exactly, thank you.
Comments? All right, not seeing any. The next item on the agenda is Presentation of Distinguished Budget Presentation Award.
My staff seems to have been like camped out and I don't really find them. Would you mind, since we have the basketball boosters here, would you mind amending that? Bring them up first, since they've been patiently waiting. And I'll get the staff to come in and do that in a second.
Yes, so which one is this?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to change the agenda to vote for the gift voter accept booster's basketball gift of nine thousand dollars at present time.
Second.
I really appreciate the debate on that one.
Can't we get more than nine grades?
Any votes to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, that's unanimous, Tracy. Come on up, gentlemen. Welcome, if you please introduce yourselves and discuss the grant that we're looking for.
My guest, Mike Hesch, President of the Class at Basketball Boosters.
Welcome, Mike.
And I'm Tim Bernika, I'm here as a member of the Rec Commission. We're going to be using some of these, or all of these funds in conjunction with some of our other funds to redo the basketball courts down on Soria Street behind the library.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. So we'd like to present a gift of nine thousand dollars to improve the Soria Street courts, something that we've raised money for years ago when a member of our board passed away that was a big proponent of doing that, something he was so we always wanted to see those courts done and we're happy to finally see it come through, so we'd like to present this contribution.
Very nice of you. Can I ask, what do you envision is actually gonna, I think we all know what course we're talking about, what improvements may be made, I'm just curious.
So what we're gonna do, the plan's now called for the single court that's there now is gonna be replaced by two courts. And the courts are gonna be, currently, if you want to say that they run roughly north-south, they're gonna run east-west. So there'll be two courts, side by side, running east-west from, I guess if you want to visualize it, from the parking lot that is there now towards the fence where the MTA fence. So that's the way that's envisioned. We've, and we've been through this a few times, and the final piece of this, the funding, was this nine thousand dollar jack. All the other funding came from previously approved CPC monies and Recreation Department monies. And this was the final piece of the puzzle, so now that we've got this done, we're gonna go forward with getting the vendors to perform the work, and it will start, you know, as long as it's our last snow, it'll start early April.
Great.
Sounds wonderful. Any other questions?
I just wanna say, I think Mike called me in summer of 2018 to start queuing this up, and for a whole host of reasons, and the slowness of government, here we are. And I'm really thrilled that we're finally making this happen.
Well, thank you.
Oh, then is any interest being given on that?
I just say that this is the type of thing that makes Cohasset a special town, and I'd like to thank you very much for the work that you guys do. Well done.
Wonderful, glad to be able to do this.
So you're seeking to formally accept the grant?
Yeah, so I make a motion to accept the nine thousand dollar gift from the boosters' basketball gift of nine thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay. And must I have a second? Any discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those, unanimous? Thank you very much, gentlemen, we really appreciate it, thank you.
Well done.
Nope, I don't think so.
Nope.
Well, we're good, if we have to do it, we'll fix it in the future.
Get the money in the back third.
If we gotta be good.
You might watch the reruns.
I don't want that to take another year.
We're actually, by the way, working on a gifts policy, which I want to present to you shortly.
That was one of the slow downs, but...
So if we can go back to the regular agenda.
I'd have Don and Paul come up.
So we have very exciting news, so...
This is a picture.
So the, um, the town has the last couple of years been working, so Paula went to a conference a couple of years ago, but one of my colleagues spoke at it and talked about how they did this great budget guide, this budget package, which we have, it's on the line. And so the last couple of years we've been doing, have been working towards presenting it for an award, and this year we filed. And we just found out, last week, yeah, last week, that we won. So for the first time, the town has received the Distinguished Budget Award from the government finance officers. We're gonna get a five, much like that stone one back there for the CAFR in the future, we got this great little frame from W.B. Mason, not the certificate.
You're a supply company?
Well, a fair number of people get the CAFR, very much, very fewer, much fewer get this, and this is a fairly intense process. There's a whole lot of required materials in the book, and it's really been a great guide, I think, you know, we worked collaboratively with all of you, we worked with the Advisory Committee, we worked with Capital Budget Committee, and there's lots of great information here. It's not just numbers anymore, it's narrative, it's history, it's charts, it's a summary, it really brings the whole community's spending plan to life. And there's still a work to be done, we're gonna still work on tweaking, but I really wanna thank Paula and Don because the work that they did on this, and all the staff, and all the departments, by the way, because all of them have had to give us narratives and all this, they never had to do much.
Everybody gets more work.
Everybody gets more work. The result is, though, not only has it won an award, but it's opened and made much more transparent the entire budget process for the community, which I think is the most important part of it all, so.
And it's available on, it's available online, Chris?
It is available online. The last couple of years it's been available, and the new one, which we've just started the process on, you'll see in January, so.
Let me get a picture of you going over in the middle of the camera.
How about, we'll all stand up.
It's good social media photo op.
Once you hold that, Paul, that you, and then, here, and then, will the two of us come hold, hold your card?
Yay, perfect.
Congratulations.
I gotta, I gotta come back, I can't let these millennials. Oh, you guys all look much better with an experienced photographer.
Thank you very much.
May I say something?
Yes, Diane.
I just, I just wanted to say, I had a call, like, a month ago, from somebody who's in a new development in town, and they just didn't understand, you know, how their taxes work, and where all the money goes, and I brought them that book, and I said, this has everything in it, you know, they, they don't have their roads plowed by the town of Cohasset, and, you know, but they pay a lot of taxes, and, and it really does bring the community to life in kind of how we're structured, and where our, where our tax dollars go, but, it gives us, it just gives us some shape that I think people really appreciate, so it's not only for us budget geeks, but really it's a good community resource, so thank you.
There's a little bit of a deep dive there, too, with all the departments, which I kinda like about it, 'cause you should have some idea of all the things that they do, 'cause there's a lot more to most of the departments than you think.
It's just not a line item, and that's what that book does, thank you.
And we're actually one of the smallest communities that actually produces this. Most communities are two or three times our size, they have a much bigger staff, I mean, you're looking at the large...
But our staff is much better and smarter.
I agree, we're very hardworking, and again, I really wanna thank you, Paula and Don. Paul's bringing the idea to life, and for every, all the department heads and all the members of the boards and committees who've actually made this possible, so thank you.
Well, Chris has a lot to do with this, too, and Mary Gallagher did a lot of the initial stuff as well, so, there's a lot of people, thanks in there.
We're building on a foundation, right? So we keep setting them a high bar, so now we gotta keep up the hard work.
Yeah, yeah, so Don's been adding a ton of work in the last couple of years.
Really good. Really good.
All right.
Thank you very much.
We love feathers in our cap, yes.
Here we go.
And you're all over social media, get right on the internet.
You will be, too.
You're gonna go viral.
Watch out.
Thank you both. So that was, that's our good news piece tonight, we have more good news with Mary...
Keep it going.
We know that.
I think Tracy has the paperwork. Okay, so we're gonna submit the recap tomorrow, but we did the LA five, we have the excess levy capacity, I have two things that I need, I need the LA five signed, I have two copies, I just uploaded with the recap, she can have one for the, Tracy can have one for the minister if you want. And then I have an authorization that allows me to submit to the Department of Revenue under either Chris or my name, I need the board to sign, and then I have to upload this document.
So you're asking the board to take...
So one is authorizing you, and one is authorizing me, if you want me to just...
We voted this already, right?
No, you're gonna vote...
We do this every year.
So, so what you need to, so, there's a filing that has to happen now?
Yep.
And, so the board needs to vote to authorize myself and/or Mary Quill, on behalf of the board, it's like a formally filed statement, you've already approved the one rate, which is all they have to do.
Yep, in that LA, yep.
And, and so they don't need to vote on this?
No, they've already voted.
You just need to vote this authorization that either Mary or I can file this...
Someone wanna make that motion?
They do have to sign that, though, they've already voted, they have to sign it.
Wait a second, let me get the motion done first.
I'll make a motion, authorize, gateway authorization letter on Town of Cohasset, with authorizing Town Manager Christopher Senior or Mary Quill to submit to the Mass Department of Revenue Division of Services.
Second.
Okay, all those in discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, that's unanimous, Tracy?
And you need to, you need to sign this.
And we can just sign this now and take care of it for you.
Yes.
So there's gonna be four documents to sign.
Well, we'll do it now, 'cause you can get it out tomorrow, right?
Yeah, this is the, this is the tax bill.
I don't know if we oughta have citizens watching us sign a tax authorization. This is closed, you should have done this in executive session.
That'll be big trouble.
All right, sign tax authorization.
Sign for signing for taxes.
We gotta do the hard work.
There's one that needs to come back.
So hard to snapshot.
Is that the one missing, Diane?
Yes, I said Diane. Can you do that after? Thanks.
Diane?
No problem.
This is, by the way, this is, you're getting a work ethic, this is just the beginning of the process we're gonna be signing down.
Nice sign, I love it.
This is signatory night.
We got two of those.
Yeah, it's a two-page.
Yeah, you got everything? You got everything?
You got all the votes you need, Mary? We're all set?
Yes, yes. So do we need to vote to close the hearing?
Yeah, she wants to know if we have to close the hearing.
I move that we vote, vote to close the fiscal 2020 tax classification hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, unanimous, Tracy? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mary.
Good job again.
Thank you very much.
So I have some, what was the tax rate this year? What was the tax rate, Mary?
Twelve ninety-seven.
Twelve ninety-seven.
Well, it has to be certified, after we submit all of this, but that's a proposed rate. We'll call it a proposed rate right now.
Proposed twelve ninety-seven.
Last year it was twelve ninety, so modest.
Very modest change.
Send me your suss.
We'll be sending out an email to everybody in town on this, so.
So if I can, so if I can update you...
By the way, you don't need to send it to us.
He's revenue obsessed.
I love it, I love it.
So the, the next four items are all, are all coming off, for one reason or another, let me explain, Mr. Chairman, the first one, so Mary Johnson's not with us tonight, because she's, as I explained, she said, well, actually I didn't, so she's actually watching her, her daughter, well, she, her daughter's in labor, so that's good news. Plus, we have some file updates to do on this HR manual, so we may kick this off till January, depends on when this gets done, we'll see how the agendas shake out. And this is replacing the bylaw for non-union workers, it, it, it's a comprehensive plan. As I, the police contract, the lieutenant contract, we need to postpone that, too, hopefully that'll be for the seventeenth. The Monday liquor license turns out, even though we rushed to get it on, it turns out they don't need it, because the group that they're hiring has their own catering license, which carries with them, so they don't really need it. And the CONCOM update was handled, actually, in the executive session, so those four items are now under control. And now we have Taffy Notthing.
That puts us in just a few minutes ahead of schedule, so it's good.
We actually are ahead of schedule, and so we have Taffy Notthing, the Chair of the Class of Housing Authority.
Welcome, Jesse.
Thank you, thank you for that. I asked Chris and some Kevin to be allowed to come tonight, because we have a lot of updates on things that are going on in the Housing Authority, that we've probably sort of been in the dark about for a while. So, the first thing I want to talk about is the fact that we have engaged a new Executive Director. I did talk to her about coming tonight with me, but she lives in West Bridgewater, and she's real comfortable driving in the snow in the dark, and so I really didn't think she needed to be here tonight, but anytime you want to take the opportunity to go down to the Housing Authority on a Wednesday or Thursday, she will be there, would be happy to meet you. I wanted to give you a little history, I went on to the board in two thousand and three, and Marilyn LeBlanc was the Executive Director at that time, and she had been for several years, I'm not exactly sure how many, she still lives at Sixty Elm Street as a tenant, and has, actually was a board member until May, when she resigned. After that, we had Catherine Luna from two thousand and five to January of this year, and she was excellent, excellent to work with, and wonderful Executive Director. Unfortunately, she became very ill and has passed away. And for the last eight months, nine months, we had a temporary executive new Rita Osborne, who was actually a business partner of Catherine Luna's, so it was very easy for her to take over the work, and that she was familiar with how things were being done in our office. It was very difficult for her, because she and Catherine were very good friends, so. Five years ago, it was when Deval Patrick was still Governor, the HCD and the state decided to make some sweeping changes to Housing Authority regulations because of corruption in some of the big city housing authorities. And they now have much more oversight, and tremendous amount of paperwork, which are required of housing authorities. It's really put a burden on small housing authorities.
Just so everybody can hear, oh, see, stop. Go ahead.
We are one-person housing authority, because we are only allowed a certain number of hours, eighteen hours of staff, because of the number of units that we have. By the state, how much the staff is paid is determined by the state, so we don't have any control over that. And all this paperwork became, has become really untenable for a single person Executive Director. So Rita, who was our temporary, had never had any intention of staying with us, she lived in Southborough, even worse, now to get here. So we discussed whether we would go the route of trying to hire another Executive Director, and we actually interviewed a couple of people informally to talk to them about that, or to go in a different direction, and we decided to go in another direction. Now, in the midst of all these changes that the state and DHCD came up with five years ago, a big one was revitalization, and they were talking then, and they still, they just sent out something recently about wanting to have seven regions of the state, and one housing authority would cover seven regions of the state, you know where that would put us, into Boston. We don't think it's a good idea at all, you know, we would totally lose our tongue. But we know that this is where they're thinking we should go. So we looked at some things, possibilities around us, about two years ago Hull merged with Waymouth, more recently, Hingham has now formed a temporary agreement with Quincy. So we looked at our needs, and we interviewed three different housing authorities, and we decided to enter into a management agreement, which is what the state calls this, with the Norwell Housing Authority. So Norwell is a very similar agency to ours in size, and they have, I think, about eighty units of senior and young disabled housing, which is what we have at Sixty Elm Street, and they have five, six eighty-nine buildings, which are group homes, which will, we have three, we'll be talking about that later. Their Executive Director was working part-time, she was interested in working full-time, which we could do for her, so she was enthusiastic about it, and her board was willing to give it a try. It's financially feasible for them in some ways, because they get all the money, the salary for the Executive Director. And the two organizations remain totally separate, we have two separate board directors, the director reports to each of us separately, we determine our own policies within what we're allowed to determine, and, but the plus side of it is that we can share staff. And Norwell has, I don't know how many hours she has, but part-time, a staff assistant, like a bookkeeper, a person, who can come to Cohasset and do the same kind of work that some of this paperwork, that's really is, you know, onerous, and not the kind of thing Executive Directors should be spending their time doing. And also, they can share maintenance personnel. The whole, how the whole agreement is worded is all determined by DHCD, and the agreement we're in right now is only till June of next year, end of our fiscal year, but we certainly hope that we'd be able to re-up that for one year the first time, and then it would be three years after that, if we wanted to continue to do that. The director's name is Colleen Locchi, L-O-C-C-H-I, she's been with Norwell for nine years, and before that she was with Medfield. Her office staff has been with her for more than five years, and her maintenance people have also been with her for a long time. So we will be able to have more of a presence in our office than we've had, which has been an issue to the tenants, that this, there's no, the Executive Director has been there one day a week for the last year, or not at all, and so we will have staff three days a week, and that's a great thing. You probably are aware that Jill Rosano, our maintenance person, has been out since the first of June with us, she had a very bad injury on the job, and she is not going to be back for another three months at least, and that has left a huge gap at Sixty Elm Street, because Jill was everything to everybody down there, much more than she should have been, but she was. But the Norwell maintenance person, man, has been covering all the emergency calls, we have twenty-four-hour answering service monitored twenty-four-seven by the Executive Director, and we've also had a lot of help from Jim Curley, who stepped in with a lot of the day-to-day work down there, so pretty much we're covered, although we still, we certainly miss Jill. So how that works out in the end is still gonna be determined. So as I said, that's about it, unless you have any questions, we see this as a win-win for us and the ability to have more staff on site.
So is part of the idea of doing a combination to help preclude the state from doing the bigger ones?
Yes.
That's why this is being done.
I mean, so we've, so we've done this, and hopefully they'll be happy for a while.
So then the, in the expense of the Executive Director, that'll be shared with Norwell as well?
Well, we have, we have a certain amount of money allowed for us for the eighteen hours, and that goes all to Norwell, the state determines that amount of money.
Okay, so...
And that goes to Norwell, and then she decides how it's spent, whether it goes to her salary or her office salary, whose hours will go to the...
But you're under agreement, gonna get all the things that you were talking about, which is...
Yes, oh, yeah, that's all done, this is in place, this went into place November first, yeah, so, so far it's working, I think it's working very well. Colleen, you know, she has an awful lot to catch up on, and she has a lot of backlog of work that wasn't done for the last year, that, that she has to catch up on, and of course she's, you know, totally new to Cohasset, so it's a lot on her plate, and I hope she doesn't regret that she agreed to do it.
Yes.
So this basically gives more local control with kind of regional aspect?
Yeah, we, we're not losing any, I don't see that we're losing any local control.
Right, and if we went to the larger system, like a...
Well, yeah, I wouldn't wanna be going to Quincy, because, you know, what do they have, you know, something like twelve hundred units, what do they care about our sixty units who'd be lost?
Yeah.
Whereas that's what I really liked about Norwell, she had more time that she could offer us, we talked to another town, we talked to Situate, they are, their directors are already full-time, they have a lot more units, and I'm trying, I couldn't get my head wrapped around how she was gonna still be full-time in Situate and be half-time with us, you know, how is that gonna work? So I, I was much more comfortable with going to Norwell.
Seems like a great fit.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they've done very well, thank you.
Okay, so...
Excuse me, Chris has something?
No, no, I, I, we had had some conversations some months ago, and Taffy had alluded to the conversation going on, I think this is a great solution, it's a natural partner, we've done already collaborative agreements on other areas with Norwell and the other towns, so I think this is just a natural kind of, you know, it's a regional approach to a common problem.
Yeah.
And if, if it works, fingers crossed, it'll help us both maintain the kind of local response to the populations that we have.
So then I want to update you on the new construction, which we're still calling the replacement of the Tredus House, when it's built, it will have a new name, but, so you know, I think that we sold the Tredus House, it was the old house that was in the front lot at seventy-six Elm Street, I believe it is. And the purchaser decided to tear it down and build, and so that is coming along, I think it looks like it's gonna be a very nice house, and I'm sure he wants to put it on the market soon. And we are building on the property that we retained behind that house. So the planning of this project began in two thousand and seven, and there've been lots of stops and starts in it, I've been involved from the very beginning. But it went out to bid, we have, in June, we had to extend the bids over the summer, but we have, now we have a general contractor, Farica Construction of Bridgewater, and he has engaged some local contractors, the excavation was done by Emmanuel Owen Hingham, so we're happy about that. Farica Project Manager on site, has an excellent reputation, and he has actually just done a total rehab of a six eighty-nine lift, Colleen Locchi from Norwell, so, so that was great. The liaison with DHCD is also well-known and respected, and we have engaged a clerk of the works, who is Brian Costello, who lives on Beetwood Street, I don't know if any of you know him, but he just retired in June as the Executive Director of Watertown Housing Authority, and so he has extensive knowledge about how Housing Authority works, how state funding works, and about construction, because they've done a lot of construction in Watertown over the years, so, so that's excellent. So I, after living and not sleeping with this project for more than three years, I think we're in a good place now, and I hope, we are hoping to have our official groundbreaking on December nineteenth, I thought, hoped I would know today, but I think the state didn't work today, so we will let you know when it is. They have already, they poured the foundation over the weekend, so, but we'll figure out what it's like for breaking ground.
Yeah, you need those photo ops.
Yeah, we need the photo ops, we had hoped the governor and Tom, we were waiting, but the governor finally said no. The completion, hopefully, will be a year from now, December twenty twenty.
Can you describe exactly what the new property's...
Oh, what, what this is, okay, yeah. Yeah, I use that term lightly, a six eighty-nine, a six eighty-nine development is a group home for the mentally disabled. And we have, we had, we had three, behind where we're building now, this duplex was built in the eighties, which the Housing Authority owns, and the Tredus House was the same thing. We had to, we decided to do this because the Tredus House was not, we were not able to rehab that to conform to standards for people who are served by the Department of Developmental Services, so, and we decided that we had enough land behind it to build a half of the duplex, so it'll be a mirror of what's already there. And in those units, we had twelve disabled people, and that's what we'll have when this new one is built, we moved people out of the Tredus House, and they will, they are replacement people, will come back to that house, so, and those twelve units, twelve people count as twelve units of affordable housing, and that's important to the world.
Yeah, it's really important.
So, so we didn't, we haven't lost that. And those are not, we are the, we're the landlords of that property, they're run by an agency that is appointed by DDS, Department of Developmental Services, they're run by Human Service Options, we do not determine who lives in them, there's not any Cohasset preference or anything like that. Historically, the twelve people who moved in there in the beginning in the eighties all came from state institutions, they were severely disabled, and many of them are still alive, the same people who moved in the eighties. And the people that coming in, that even come in now, if someone just passed away and they put an emergency placement in one of the homes in the duplex, they're pretty severely disabled, we have five people in wheelchairs there right now. And if you go down there and see, the construction project is really, it's really tight, you know, they had to put the security fence around, and they, but Farica Construction built a ramp, so they could get the wheelchairs out of the side that's affected by the construction. And it, so they're, and they're meeting, and it seems to be working out, so. So the third issue that we have is our board. So we are a five-person board. Four people are elected in the town election, historically, shall we say. One is appointed by the governor, five-year terms. We are currently operating with a three-person board. Because one of our elected members has decided to resign, has resigned. And our fifth seat is open. I'll explain to you why in a minute. But that is making our work very difficult. For instance, we have to have all our checks assigned to two people. Last week, you know, people are in town, nobody can sign, you know, I can't sign the checks myself.
You'll have to be there for a quorum, right?
Yeah, I have to have the three people for a quorum. So the problem is, that makes it worse, the fifth seat is empty because in this big overhaul, the state, in their wisdom, decided to require that one board member should be a tenant. Now, that's a good idea. We have always had a board member who was a tenant. But we always talked that tenant into running for election in the town. So that's how we had Marilyn LeBlanc. But the state said, no, that didn't count. Because, you know, she was, they just considered her to be a towns person, not a tenant, even though she was. Because they felt that the tenant representative on the board should be elected by only the tenants. So this, people who live at Sixty Elm Street should choose their representative for the board. Well, the small housing authorities don't think that that's a good idea. We don't have a lot of interest in that kind of thing. We may, maybe have one or two people who might be interested in running for the board. But I think we might, if we were lucky, have ten people who would come and cast votes for anyone who wanted to be on the board. So the small housing authorities are fighting with the state about how this appointment's going to be made and it, and no decision has been made. We would like to say that the board will recommend a tenant and come to the selectmen and ask you to appoint that person. To me, to us, that's what we think would be the best way to do it. But in the meantime, I've checked, Carol, the St. Pierre, checked with Mr. Terenzis for me and he said, no, we should not try to appoint a tenant, not to ask you to appoint a tenant, so that seat is gone. And the other issue that we have is that we just got a new governor's appointee and Jack knows all about this.
A long, long struggle.
We had, we had a governor's appointee for term expired two and a half years ago. It has taken this long for the governor to make his appointment. Now, that person did continue on, on the board because, you know, in the temporary position. But, so we do have a new person appointed and he is a good person, very good person, but he is brand-new to the board. And there's a steep learning curve to being on this board. And for him to become, to start to be a really active, involved member. So that's what we have right now. We have myself, we have Tom Mead, and who is the governor's appointee. And we have Susan Sardena, who you probably know, she's on CBC board and.
And Affordable Housing.
Yep, representing us. So that's why I called Kevin and I talked to Chris about getting this appointment made to our board immediately. Because we only have five months between now and May and that's what this appointment is for. And we need this person. I need this person to help me do the work of the board. But Kevin said, no, we have to do the process.
Let me just explain that. Because we have a lot of committees come before us and, and, and they, and a number of them do ask for, you know, have exceptions on to how things should be appointed and so forth and so on. What we do with one committee, you know, affects what we can do with all other committees. And so the process of how we appoint committees and follow the proper process is something that's very important to us. And that's something that I sort of said, the board, now that we're in a session, the board can change that. I don't, you know, that'd be up to the board. The second point on this too, though, is particularly with the housing authority. Part of the defugality that we've gotten into is the governor's made the observation and there've actually been a lot of malfeasance and problems with the proper running of housing authorities. It's created quite a mess. That's part of the circumstances we've got in now. So if anything, that says that the housing authority should be particularly careful that we always follow proper procedures because not doing so is what created, went to an extreme to, you know, in big cities and so forth. So particularly with the housing authority and, and the problems, net and state problems that the governor's pointing out to, would say that, you know, so what Chris and I have done was, and Chris has already posted for this position, so that the applications can come in and we can make an appointment the next time we meet, which is on the seventeenth. That way we follow the proper procedures. The governor can't criticize us for not doing things properly and life should go on, but that was the reason behind that. That being said, now that we're as a board, sitting here, five of us, any three, you know, we can do whatever, you know, you can change that if you want to, but that wouldn't be my inclination. Diane, then Carrie?
So my, my question is, because we, we don't make appointments to the housing authority. So my guess is that the only thing we could do is to fill a vacancy of an elected position. So that could be the elected position that resigned in dual session with the housing authority.
Right, that's the process.
That would be the process.
Yeah, so that's what we're talking about.
Because it's between the elections, until the election, we could, in a joint session with the members of the housing authority, make that appointment.
Which is what we'll do next meeting. That'll be taken care of. Carrie?
So this will only be a seat then until May?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any particular skills you want so we can help maybe recruit some applicants here? Are there any personality types or skills? Because it's clearly.
I think Chris, Chris should have already posted this too, but.
Clearly we need to help and, yeah.
I think they need a millennial candidate.
But it's, no, I think we need to recruit some good applicants.
I think, I mean, not to speak for Taffy, I think, I think she's looking to have a seasoned hand on, on the interim. And then if somebody wants to run in the spring, that would be awesome.
Okay.
And learn, maybe go to meetings and learn what it's all about. Is that, is that fair to say?
Yes, I, you know, I definitely want somebody who has some familiarity with housing and with the housing authority, if that's possible, because, you know, to be helpful to me. And I wouldn't mind saying I'd like to see somebody a little bit younger. The board is, yeah, well, thank God for Tom Mead. But everybody else is pushing eighty on the board, so it's, Susan wouldn't like that.
So hopefully we'll get a number of applications in and when we, in a joint, yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah.
And when we meet next week, or next, next meeting, we'll do jointly and we'll make an appointment, so. The public now is aware we're looking for applications for this important thing. It'll be printed hopefully in the Mariner. Chris, you've already posted this position, right?
Have we posted? No, we, we're waiting for tonight to.
Whatever, yeah. So that we could act on it. I mean, I do want to move along.
I mean, I have to say, I, you know, I, if, if we get any, any, I have the application from the person that the board was ready to present to you tonight. I have it with me and I frankly doubt that we'll get any applicants knocking on our door the first two weeks in December. But if we do, we will certainly look at them, you know, we'd be happy to look at them as a board. And the other thing I said to Chris, or to Kevin, is that we will have two openings next, in the May, in May. The two, the two positions that will be going on, so we definitely would like to have some more interest from them.
Well, part of going through this process, we think Taffy and I discussed that part of going through this process
Yeah.
will be just what Carrie was saying, it generates some interest. If they don't get into it now, they can, it'll generate the activity to maybe get more people and that's the whole part of the, again, that's a part of the reward that you get for proper process. People get confident in, and want to be involved because it's a rational, proper, open process. Okay. I gotta say, your report is very impressive, the work, Taffy, that you've done. And your board has done, this community is really stellar and I just want to thank you very much, really.
You're welcome, but I think we're only going up, you know. It's been, it's been a very rough couple of years, very rough couple of years.
And I can second that. We worked very hard to get Tom Mead on the board. And I wish we'd had a little bit quicker response from the State House. I'll say that diplomatically.
Yes, yeah.
Anything else?
Thank you, nope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, can I give you that application?
Yes, absolutely.
I bet you can. Congratulations too on the executive director and the sharing.
Yeah.
Really, really wonderful.
Yep, yeah.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is board committee vacancies. We have.
So we've mentioned, we've mentioned the housing authority.
Yeah, we didn't have to do the shellfish.
So we have a, we have, our Shellfish Constable has served long and well, Mr. Paul Pattinson, has been seeking to retire for some time. He's sir, and so we, we, we're officially reopening the search. It's a very part-time position with a very modest stipend, which I think is five hundred dollars. So the, and at the moment, we don't have any active Shellfish bits anyway. So that said, it's an important position to have, particularly with everything else that's going on. And we, we're seeking anyone's interest. You know, we've, we've talked to some folks and, you know, we'd like someone to express some interest. If anyone has any questions, we're happy to answer them on this appointment of the board, so.
Do you have, like, a job description?
Right, yeah, I was gonna ask you.
I think it's in the bylaws, but.
Like you need to have a boat.
Right.
I have had a couple people ask me about it, honestly, so.
Right, do you need to know?
So let me, let me pull out what's official and then circle it to all of you and you can post it wherever you like.
Well, just post this as the normal thing you do for committees. I don't want us to get involved.
No, no, I'm going to post this committee, but I'm saying.
Post it as you do all committees. If you send us a, excuse me, if you send us a description of what it is and a nice one-page thing, it may show up in some social media accounts. It may get us some more people, okay? So do a one-pager that can be promoted by us on social media and that, and I bet we'll get some applications, but also promote it in its normal way and once we've got a few, then we'll have that come before the board and we'll put it on the agenda and appoint a constable. Is that acceptable to the board? Okay, good.
Now, we have one-third. I want to thank Paul, I want to thank Jack for actively recruiting. Phil Lehrer has officially applied. You should have his application in the packet and I would recommend that you act on that favorably to appoint him to the town hall.
Okay, so there's an application here. Anybody want to speak to that application?
For Paul?
Yeah, no, Phil.
Phil, Phil, I'm sorry.
This is Paul.
Paul, I know, well. I spoke with him at length, actually at church for.
An hour and a half. It's a thing called the constitution.
Outside of a certain white building near where we are. He really, his concern was that the, that, that we as a board were going to take it seriously and I assured him this is one of our, the, the board's priorities and I think this speaks to the importance of us setting goals and following it and also getting the, the town hall painted. And he saw that as an example that the board will support him. And he's, we're so lucky to get him, so.
Great.
Enough said. And, and then he talked to Paul and Paul sealed the deal.
Yep, I spoke with him at length.
Teacher, good work.
I didn't do it during any, any of the services.
You didn't do it during an operation or anything?
Now we're HIPAA.
You're supposed to do no harm.
But he seemed to be very interested and I think he's applied and ready to go, so.
Great. I was impressed that he has his construction supervisor license, which, you know, he's well-known for his work with, but of course his Appalachian Service project of Boy Scout work. I would imagine he has a skill set.
I think quite appropriate, plus he's been in town decades and his family has. They've been active in the community, so this is a good, a good get for this committee, I think. Okay, is there a motion?
I'd like to move that we appoint Mr. Lehrer.
Phil is his name.
Phil Lehrer, dude.
I'm glad you were active in getting him.
Come on, I'm trying to get this thing out here.
What's his name?
I moved that we appoint, I keep saying Paul, Phil Lehrer, to the Town Hall Building Committee.
Any discussion, all those in favor say aye, aye opposed, nay. That's unanimous tracing. And thank you, Phil, for stepping up. This is great. All right, next thing is the community aggregation, public review period. We have Representative Ma, Ma, identify yourself and we're glad to see you again.
Thank you, Tanya Bodell, eighty-eight South Main Street, and I'm the Chair of the Alternative Energy Committee.
Welcome. So we're here to cool over the process for the public review period, so.
Yes, I can give a little brief overview and then you want to discuss it from there?
And then let us know exactly what we need to do. I know we need to set a date. I believe we'll have to do that.
Exactly. So we, as a town, voted at the town meeting last spring to proceed with a plan for community aggregation. That plan has been drafted. It's been posted on the Board of Selectmen website. As part of the process, there's a two-week, at least a two-week, public review period. And that review period requires both in-writing comments as well as in-person comments, which would then be compiled with the plan and submitted to the Department of Public Utilities of Massachusetts for final approval. We've already talked to the Department of Energy Resources, D O E R, on their initial comments. Those will also be submitted. But a two-week, at least a two-week, public comment period is required with both in-writing and in-person submissions. During that time, the Alternative Energy Committee is prepared to provide a presentation summarizing the plan. We can provide a summary up on the, to, to the town to post on their website if you'd like. In fact, we do have a frequently asked question page as well as a summary of the plan already drafted that we can put up for people to review as well. I, I think we've also worked on putting together an article or an editorial op-ed that describes it. So we're here to help as much as we can. These are some of the ways we see ourselves assisting, but what we need from the Board of Selectmen is an official declaration of the public comment period with the dates of that public comment period. And ideally some guidance on an appropriate venue for the in-person comments. Whether that would be a Board of Selectmen meeting or some other type of meeting called by the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you very much. So what I'm going to suggest is, moving things along, I think that we have a, a public comment period suggested here of twelve, four nineteen to twelve, eighteen, nineteen. If that's agreeable to the board, someone want to make a motion, we can handle that and then we can discuss our little public forum. That should take care of what you need, right?
That's perfect.
So I, I make a motion, I'm going to read this whole quickly, if that's all right, because it looks like this national law and education law requires. I'll make a motion, we approve a review by residents from December fourth, two thousand and nineteen to December eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. Municipal aggregation law, national law, chapter one sixty-four, section thirty-four requires that a municipal aggregation plan developed by a municipality Cohasset be made available by, for review by its residents. The DPU requires two-week period of public review of the aggregation plan. Suggested procedure for two-week period for review by residents of the aggregation plan by municipality one. Read and outline the aggregation program at a public meeting, which we will schedule. Or publish an announcement in the town website or local newspaper. I believe it will be on the town website. Suggestions at a meeting of the Board of Selectmen or other public meeting, read a brief outline of the aggregation program or publish an announcement on the town website or local newspaper. Two, announce that the aggregation plan be available for review in the municipal offices and on the town website for related, or other related website. Three, announce that there will be a two-week period to submit written comments from December fourth, two thousand and nineteen to December eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. And after the two-week period, coincident with the end of the two-week period, hold a public hearing at the board, at the meeting of the Board of Selectmen or other public meeting for oral and written comments concerning the aggregation plan that will be scheduled. Suggestions of meeting, Board of Selectmen open public meeting and request oral written comments. Oral comments from public should be recorded in the minutes of any written comment should be including the addendum to the minutes. If there are no oral written comments received from the public, there should be associated in the minutes. And then close the public hearing period for oral written comments concerning the initial aggregation documents after December eighteen.
That's a motion, is that seconded?
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye opposed. And I'm, that's unanimous tracing. Why don't you keep that because you only read it two weeks from now till. Anybody hear that? I was trying to be quiet about that.
The Irish whisper, huh?
Okay, so we need to have a meeting. So I think what we could discuss is, is whether or not, it sounds to me, we could put this on a selectmen meeting for fifteen or twenty minutes. I'm almost thinking that, that might, I don't know, we could put that and do it that way. One benefit of doing that would be is we all get the benefit of it. Also, when we have it as a selectmen meeting, it's much better covered and televised. I mean, we'd really be emphasized because people read the agenda and all that. So anyways, it's a virtue to that. Do you want to do it separately? It's really up to the board.
I just think this December and it's such a busy time of year, I feel like having it with us would be better for everyone.
Than another night. Does it have to be within this period? Can it be like in January or does it need to be at our next meeting, so to speak?
It needs to be within the public comment period because the in-person comments are going to be made at that meeting.
So, so it does, it does fit in where our next meeting is the seventeenth, which is one day shy of this year.
So, you could either keep it within that two-week period or extend the public comment into January if you wanted to hold the meeting.
Do you have a preference? Would you have a preference?
We would like to, well, we have two preferences, and they're somewhat conflicting. The first is we'd like as much publicity and information about this, so we do get the public comment, and that's the beginning of the education and the socialization of this plan. On the other hand, we'd like to keep up with Situit and Marshfield that we intend to go out to bid with, because we get the leverage of their larger load, which would help us to get a better price, and they've already submitted to the DPU. So, on the one hand, we'd like to have it before the end of the year, and the other, more time for socialization would be better. And so, given that, I defer to you on your preference.
It would seem to me, but having it in our next meeting, because we can, our meetings are widely broadcast, and people are reading these agendas.
And we can publicize beforehand.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's, it's very good points. However, it is a very constrained and short period. Normally, we would want, for the socialization, you'd wanna have time for robust community involvement to occur and then discussion, but we have the holidays coming up. But I think if we are gonna do it within the two weeks, what we should do is make sure a certain local newspaper covered that heavily. And I'm not pointing at any particular local newspaper whatsoever in the fact that they're here.
One of the things is, is they do cover our meetings, so they'd be here for that. And plus, we're all set the TV right here, so. Seems to me that we get a big bang for a buck putting this on a selectmen meeting.
I think so.
Because you're gonna get.
And it's an excellent paper, by the way.
I completely agree. I think we also, in recognition of the education and socialization, there's going to be another bite at that apple leading up to the spring town meeting, where my goal is to make sure that anybody who hasn't heard about this plan is living under a rock.
We can publicize, we can push that, yes.
I just think, though, when you were in our last meeting, one of the primary goals that stated was to try to get it done by the end of this calendar year, so. And I think sometimes the condensed timeframe, it actually brings, forces people to think about it and make their comments. If we extended it even to January, we're gonna still be looking the week before that public comment for everybody to come forth. So, maybe just go for it.
Completely agree.
Okay, so.
Chris.
The only thing I ask is, all because we've got a fairly long agenda, you might wanna start the meeting a little earlier, if schedules permit, maybe at six-thirty?
Sure, we'll start the meeting on the seventeenth at six-thirty. It's fine.
And then maybe do, start the meeting with this?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it'd be failure early on.
Oh, whatever, we'll figure it out.
Right. I mean, the electrical aggregation light, so there'll be electricity for lights. Can you stay later? Does that make sense? Yeah, so we'll do this on the, have this on the next.
So, I'm sorry, you need to, they need to, well, actually, you're officially saying that now, anyways.
Yeah.
But you'll, you'll have the public meeting on.
Ooh, that was part of the vote, but, oh, we voted, so do we need to vote to have them?
I think you should vote that you're gonna have a public hearing.
All right, is there a?
I think that was in the motion, though, wasn't it?
It wasn't.
No.
No, no, it's a.
We wanted to cover it just to be safe.
Uh, make a motion that we scheduled the Board of Selectmen, uh, meeting for the aggregation program on.
For public comment.
For public comment and written comment, and it could be delivered at that time on December seventeenth.
Yes.
At six-thirty P M.
Oh, shortly thereafter. Do we have a second?
Shortly thereafter.
And no, let's just say during that meeting.
During that meeting.
Second.
So, we're not confined on time, are you? Second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye opposed, then, good. Say what you need, and we'll see you on the seventeenth, and we're gonna promote this.
Real quick, I know we talked about this in our last meeting, too. Is there any way you can send us maybe a one-page electronic copy of frequently asked questions or things that we can start getting out on social media?
Yes.
We can distribute that.
Or send us whatever you want to be on social media, and all of us can use our platforms for you.
Yes, that would be great. We actually, we have both already prepared.
Right.
One is a summary of the program, summary of the plan.
Perfect, okay.
The other is a frequently asked questions, which is sort of broader to help understand what this is about. And then, of course, you already have the plan.
Yep.
Which is quite large on your website, and as I said, we're working on the op-ed. So, I will make sure that we send those two documents to everybody here.
You may also, you must be gonna, are you doing up a document that now will promote the fact that a public comment is gonna be made on? Would that be you doing that? Could you do that? In other words, if you could give us a flyer on that, we'll promote that probably, too.
Absolutely.
In other words, come to the meeting where, here it is, what we're doing, here's the date, come this way, we wanna hear your comments. For, you know, just, and we can put that up there pretty good for you.
Okay, very good.
So, the sooner you send that to us, the better, and then whatever second, go into the package, and we'll distribute it ourselves through our media.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you for all your work on this, your whole committee. Okay, so the next thing here on the agenda is the, okay, folks. For those of you who haven't been through this, this is the annual license renewal. And you're not.
Get your pens ready.
Yeah, you're not gonna, I'm not gonna even try to describe to you what you're about to go through. Get your pens ready, because we're about to approve most all of the.
Everybody has one.
Yeah, most all of the licenses that are being issued in town are done at this meeting, and we signed them at this meeting. So, I think three of us have been through this several times, but you're in for a pleasant experience.
Exciting.
So, if I can, you want me to go through this systematically? I just wanna make sure I have it.
You may wanna just note that there's two outliers on this, and you gotta cover them at the end.
Yeah, we'll cover two outliers at the end. So, what we're gonna do, what I'll do, is just try to go through this systematically, I guess, and once you've been through the experience, you'll know what this is about. So, this is the, we're annually, people have applied for their liquor and entertainment, victuals, other licenses, and these are annual licenses, and we approve them at this meeting or not approve them. And we've pretty well got this down. It used to be a three-hour process. We'll leave it at four hours. But we've got, because now we do it as a group sort of a thing for your convenience, so. Why don't I just go in and start through it, okay? So, and what we do is, is once we've approved these, I guess Tracy will be deciding to pass things our way. When they do, she'll sign them as expeditiously as possible, and we'll see how we can get through this. Do you wanna take the lead on the motion?
So, for the two thousand twenty renewal of licenses, I move to approve the renewal of the following all-alcohol on-premises licenses. Celtic Bistro Corporation doing business via Bistro, The Corner Stop Eatery doing business at The Corner Stop, A and S Restaurants LLC doing business at Atlantica, V and A A Incorporated doing business at Abacachina, White Crane Incorporated doing business Feng Shui Restaurant, Cohasset Pub Corporation doing business at Mr. Dooley's Old Village Pub, Nugent's Kitchen One LLC doing business as Nugent's Kitchen, R B L B Incorporated doing business at Lenny's Hideaway.
And is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion of any of these?
I think we need to point out that A and S Restaurants has outstanding fines against it, although I think we should be, make sure that we are aware of that. However, I would say that we should approve the license anyway, because it's important for the town, for Atlantica, to continue to be healthy, but I think we ought to note that that's a position.
Okay.
And I am in support of extending the license.
Yeah, no, any other comments? Any no further comments? Motion made, seconded. All those in favor say aye, aye opposed.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Tracy. Okay, Carrie, would you like to try this one right here?
Sure.
Wait, this says to be drunk on premises. This is me, oh, excuse me.
All right, motion to approve the renewal of the following wine and malt on-premises licenses. Cohasset Pizza Company, Inc., doing business as Victoria's, South Shore Playhouse Associates, doing business as South Shore Music Circus, and Five South Main, Inc., doing business as Five South Main.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on any of these? All those in favor say aye, aye opposed, nay. That's unanimous, Tracy. Okay, is there any, do you want to do this next one?
Sure, move to approve the renewal of the following inholder all-alcohol on-premises license. Cohasset Sorrow, Inc., D B A Red Lion Inn, Cohasset Harbor Group, LLC, D B A Cohasset Harbor Inn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye opposed, nay. That's unanimous, Tracy. Who wants to do, go ahead.
Move to approve the renewal of the following club all-alcohol on-premises licenses. The George H. Millie Post Number One Eighteen, The American Legion, and Cohasset Golf Club, doing business as Cohasset Golf Club.
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna recuse myself on this vote here. I happen to be a, on the executive board of the American Legion. I'm not of the golf club, but just to make things easy, I'm just gonna recuse myself on this one. So, any discussion? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, any discussion?
He's bumping me on already.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Paul opposed? None, four nothing.
God.
That can be, that can be naturally pulled.
He knows what he's doing, no? He knows what he's doing. All right, see how quickly you can give me place up here?
That was fast.
Remember that, you folks. All right, the next one, next one here.
I move to approve the renewal of the following retail package all-alcohol licenses. The Taste for Wine, Inc., Inc. doing business at Taste for Wine, Yoga Garage Corporation doing business at Curtis Liquors.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye opposed, nay. That's unanimous, Tracy. Next one here, wanna take a shot at this, Jack?
I'm busy signing.
All right, you go ahead. Now, Carrie's on a roll.
Are we doing the what with this one?
Yeah.
Okay, move to approve the renewal of the following retail package wine and malt licenses. Malady's Fish Market, Barrel and Vine LLC, doing business as Barrel and Vine, and The Anchor and Sale LLC, doing business as Anchor and Sale.
Second.
All those, discussion? Opposed, in favor say aye, aye opposed. That's unanimous, Tracy. You wanna get a bonus? Here's your reward. I'm getting you back.
To approve the renewal of the following common victuals license. Celtic Bistro Corporation doing business via Bistro, The Corner Stop Eatery doing business at The Corner Stop, A and S Restaurants LLC doing business at Atlantica, V and A A Incorporated doing business at Abacachina, White Crane Incorporated doing business Feng Shui Restaurant, Cohasset Pub Corporation doing business at Mr. Dooley's Old Village Pub, Nugent's Kitchen One LLC doing business at Nugent's Kitchen, R B L B Incorporated doing business at Lenny's Hideaway, Cohasset Pizza Company Incorporated doing business at Victoria's, Three A Pizza Grill doing business at Three A Pizza Grill, Five South Main, South Shore Playhouse Associates doing business at South Shore Music Circus, George H. Millie Post One Eleven, The American Legion, Cohasset Golf Club, Cohasset Pizza House, Atlantic Bagel, Cohasset Donuts LLC, H and I Donuts LLC, French Memories, J J's Dairy Hut, Olympus Field, Starbucks Field Pizza, Anchor and Sale, Maiden, S, Maiden, Massachusetts.
Okay, question. Chris, the allegiance there again, so I can't vote on it, but if I don't vote on it, can I sign the thing anyways? Do I?
I don't, no, I don't think so.
I would think if you don't vote, you don't sign.
Okay, so. What I wanna do is do this so that I'm pulled out of that, because I don't wanna not sign all these.
So, do you wanna just, wanna just, yes.
I'll make a amendment to the, to the motion, remove George H. Millie Post One Eighteen, The American Legion for a separate motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're on the main motion. Is it first and seconded?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye opposed, nay. That's unanimous.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of the following common victual license. George H. Millie Post One Eighteen, The American Legion.
Second.
Any discussion? As a recu- refusal, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass it for nothing.
I'll take the next two.
Yeah, go ahead.
Move to approve the renewal of the following inholder common victular license. Cohasset Sorrow, Sorrow, Inc., D B A Red Lion Inn, Cohasset Harbor Group, LLC, D B A Cohasset Harbor Inn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye opposed, nay.
Move to approve the renewal of the following local entertainment licenses, entertainment license licenses. A and S Restaurants LLC doing business as Atlantica, Cohasset Harbor Group LLC, D B A Cohasset Harbor Inn, Cohasset Sorrow, Inc., D B A Red Lion Inn, Cohasset Pub Corp., D B A Mr. Dooley's Old Village Pub, R B L B, Inc., D B A Lenny's Hideaway, South Shore Playhouse Associates, D B A South Shore Music Circus, George H. Millie Post, want me to withhold that?
Leave that out, if you would.
The Corner Stop Eatery, D B A The Corner Stop, Celtic Bistro Corporation, D B A Via Bistro, and Cohasset Golf Club.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye opposed, nay. That's unanimous.
I move to approve the renewal of the following local entertainment license.
No, did you do the entertainment?
George H. Millie Post, One Eighteen, The American Legion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
One not voting. It passes for nothing.
Recused.
Yep, while I water up.
Move to approve the renewal of the following state entertainment licenses. A and S Restaurants LLC, doing business as Atlantica, Cohasset Harbor Group LLC, doing business as Cohasset Harbor Inn, Cohasset Sorrow, Inc., doing business as Red Lion Inn, Cohasset Pub Corp., doing business as Mr. Dooley's Old Village Pub, The Corner Stop Eatery, doing business as The Corner Stop, R B L B, Inc., doing business as Lenny's Hideaway, South Shore Playhouse Associates, doing business as South Shore Music Circus. Should I leave the?
Yes.
Celtic Bistro Corp., doing business as Via Bistro, and Cohasset Golf Club.
Second.
Any those, discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye opposed, nay. That's unanimous.
Ask for a motion to approve George H. Millie Post One Eighteen, The American Legion for renewal of state entertainment license.
Second. Oh, move to approve the George H., move to approve the renewal of the following state entertainment license. The George H. Millie Post One Eighteen, The American Legion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There is one recusal. Passes for nothing.
Okay, next one?
I move to approve the renewal of following class one and class two car sales, new and used vehicle licenses. W N Motors Incorporated doing business Coastal Nissan, seven forty-two Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Cohasset Imports, five oh eight Chief Justice Cushing Highway.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye opposed. Unanimous. All right, and next one here.
Move to approve the renewal of the following class two car sales used vehicle licenses. C B K Auto, Jeffrey Pincus, five forty-seven Beechwood Street, Aristocrat Auto and Truck Sales, Joseph Rosano, one oh five Ripley Road, John's Car Care, John Kubik owner, and Elhage Auto Group LLC.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye opposed. That's unanimous, Tracy. The next one here, can't make sure I say this properly, but we're not going to, we need a motion to not approve the renewal of the following wine and malt license, and it's the one for Simply Smith's Catering and Event Planning, D B A. Simply Smith's at One Pleasant Street. That's the motion.
And again, it's because the license holders chose not to renew the premises based on a letter sent to the town. So, that's the reason of the fact.
I move to not approve the renewal of the following malt and wine on-premise license. Simply Smith's Catering and Event Planning doing business, Simply Smith's at One Pleasant.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye opposed. That's unanimous, Tracy. You wanna explain the last one that we're gonna adjourn?
Yeah, so the last one is Sejion Enterprises. That's a very long and complicated matter. They've actually retained a counsel, and our special counsel, Mr. Lampkin, has spoken with their counsel, who wants to be present. They can't be here tonight, so he's asked for this matter to be continued to the seventeenth. So, all our license renewals will be continued to the seventeenth based on the motion.
Okay.
Okay, I move to continue the hearing on the renewal application for Sejion Enterprises LLC and the hearing to consider denying, suspending, or revoking said renewal applications due to some note to the town of Cohasset December seventeenth, twenty nineteen, at eight thirty P M.
Second.
So, just for.
Yeah, I wanna get clarification, get clarification.
Yeah, clarification. We're setting a hearing.
You're continuing the hearing. There already is, there was already hearing set for tonight. You're continuing it.
When did we set, we set that last time we discussed this, a few weeks ago?
Yes, yes. When they would notice for their renewal, they, it's technically, this is a public hearing.
This is continuing it, and at which time we're gonna hear whatever we hear.
Correct, and they've asked for eight-thirty because of prayer.
And they're making presentations on.
Renewal application.
Okay, that motion was made, is it seconded?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye opposed. Now, that's unanimous, Tracy. Just a few minutes just to sign here and get these things done.
Somebody, these are not the electronic, but.
That's all right. We need the auto pens that the governor gets.
We need like six of them, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Then you should run for governor.
Right.
We need him when you're recording.
Just, just for the record, the chair and vice chair should be in the first two signatures.
That's why I was.
I know, I asked that, but I was told to sign.
That's why I was signing the bottom.
Oh.
You were told to sign the top?
I was just told to sign.
I was signing the bottom, because I was a month ago to not sign at the top.[1772.41] I was signing the bottom because I was a month ago to not sign at the top.
Goes by seniority, yeah.
Seniority. So, we have to sign all these over again?
No.
No, but in the future.
I would start signing them not at the top.
By the way, every time you all approve a committee member, I have to sign those for them, so.
Right.
I have to pile them all together.
I'll just keep signing on the bottom.
These are all that more, Tracy.
Yeah, I know, Tracy, it's bad, Tracy, it's bad.
I'm afraid I'm guilty, as they're sent to me, I am signing.
Usually keep them in their buckets, but.
Snapchat is the Duncan one. I don't know.
If you had a, if you had a ducky.
Finding, finding the Duncan license. Go ahead and do that one. You're getting me out of order.
No, there's two of them.
Okay.
We got more, all those there need to be sent still?
Yep.
Might as well stick to it and get it done, okay?
A little bit of.
Those who view it from the public, we suggest you take a ten-minute break. Put everything in your refrigerator.
Empty it out, heat it up.
This is an annual ritual.
Gotta keep the assembly line going.
Well done.
Every time I see one of these restaurants, my mouth, it gets watering.
Oh, you're actually rating them?
No, there's a, there, there was a two-pager, and it got.
Yeah, no, there's a few out of order.
It got separated.
That's.
I take full responsibility.
I blame you.
I just, and not only that, I signed them wrong.
The inholders.
And you didn't help us with motions, you know?
No, I didn't, because I was kidding, because I was, you didn't notice, there's wisdom in my.
I saw, I saw your strategy, Jack.
Done, and now I'm done.
Yeah, here's one, I think, of them that, I don't know.
I have plenty more for you, you know, I'll just.
I'm going. Tracy, the inholder licenses, they signed on both pages, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So much power here.
Yes, I told you, this is.
You always said that.
You're signing off every business in town. I used to, I hadn't, I had made a motion one year, food samples, but, you know.
Yeah. Oh, got it, sorry.
Now you're gonna.
Are you the clerk?
Yeah. You're just happy you're working. Get you, you're humming.
I think I'll go over to Dooley's, tell me when you're done.
Kevin, you're so fast.
I've done this before.
The assembly line.
I'm going to a house call.
I know it, yeah.
We should have to pay the mortgage.
Yeah, well, at the end, they'll be telling us we have a mortgage. We'll get that notice in the mail. We have a mortgage on every business in town.
I'm gonna refund it, darn it.
We'll just call for a tax reclassification hearing.
They're all the same color this year, weren't they different colors from the other?
Yeah, I think all but the, no, they're all electronic mostly, except for that last set, so, yeah.
So, it's gone, does it just stay the same? That's good. Makes it a lot easier to push them. They don't need to type right anymore, huh?
No, you really gotta have.
I just love taking that last page stack.
I thought we were almost done.
Well, you wanted to, you wanted to read everything. You wanted to read everything. You were very active, publicly reading.
Oh, actually, here's one more. Just, Diane, you had asked for that one, that's for the holiday school this evening, remember, they said they were gonna have Carolers or something.
Oh, right, right, right. They did come in fourth. With the, what did I say, roving, roving singers?
Yeah, roving singers. They're roving, they're roving harrowlers.
Wyssell. Wyssell. Wyssell.
Oh, yeah.
They started behaving on this one.
Scottish Irish thing.
No, I was. The American Legion.
Yeah, you are.
Sorry, yeah.
I'm a chastised.
I can tell, I don't know where I am.
Doesn't fade you.
Oh, yeah, green, what are the greens?
To tell you.
Oh, the garlands are green.
Yeah, car dealers.
They could do a handwriting analysis.
This is pretty good for a doctor.
I was gonna say. Well, I gotta, gotta do another Snapchat, hold on, I gotta take a break. I need the entertainment license. The people need to know what's happening.
I did need to take a break.
Those are kind of separate.
So, they wait for the town meeting.
We can do it when I sign. Multi-tell.
Do you want to go, do you want to do this town meeting dates, that's where you're signing, or do you want to wait?
We're gonna, we're just ahead towards the end, so, let's get it done, right?
Try and be efficient, here we go.
There's no rush at all.
There's no rush.
There's no rush.
But the quicker you get out of the bed.
Some of us want to go home.
No, no, we're, we're, we're actually on time, so.
Yep.
You live tweeting this for your audience?
One of the more exciting meetings you've ever been to, isn't it?
Woo, okay.
I'll be damned if it's not the quickest.
Markets are just celebrity sign autographs.
That folks used to take four hours till we streamlined the process, believe it or not.
You're kidding.
Literally four, right?
That was a pretty streamlined.
Three or four hours, yeah.
We used to do one at a time.
We do every one at a time.
Oh, no, you did one at a time.
That's when I was the meeting.
It was a true, all right.
I appreciate.
Then we, one year we decided, you know, this is a little, you know.
That was actually way easier than you made it seem like.
Well, yeah.
Well, next time, we do one at a time.
One at a time. Jack will have to pay attention to things.
We could discuss.
We used to, we used to.
Just keep the holiday stores separate for now, is that it?
It was a very awesome, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Okay, we're good to continue, Diane?
Yes, I just have like one or two more, so just go right ahead.
You want to go ahead?
Yep.
All right, that was the, I'm telling you. Okay, this portion of the meeting, we, what we do is we set the annual town meeting and the annual town election, and I think we did, we, we saw the annual town meeting, I think we've technically discussed this as being May fourth. So, that's no, no new, and I think we got a, you got an email, I both sent it to you. It's in the package where the town clerk is recommended we do main night, so.
Yeah.
Uh, we can do that in a single motion unless there's any controversy or questions, or. Or, when we make the motions, then we can discuss things.
Make a motion, we, uh, set that day for annual town meeting and the annual town election to be May fourth and May ninth, respectively.
Second.
Second, and any discussion? And can there's?
The first Monday in May and the first Saturday in May of two thousand twenty.
Second Saturday, right.
I'm sorry, second Saturday, sorry.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That's unanimous, Tracy. Okay, the next item on our, uh, agenda is the town meeting manager update
Okay.
of the town hall as well as other topical subjects.
So, uh, we had a, a very good meeting of the, uh, of the committee last Monday, had a good discussion about a variety of topics, including the owner's project manager, uh, reviews, which have been fi- down to four finalists. Uh, those interviews will take place next week, uh, in two separate days. And then, um, there was a very good conversation about exploring options for staff relocation, and also about options for, you know, what, what the next steps are in terms of finalizing down some recommendation to get back to board selectmen hopefully early in the new year, so. The proposed member, Mr. Lair, attended the entire meeting, part, which is great.
Mm-hmm.
As a member of the public, and, and so, uh, I believe he'll be taking part in the process next week as well, that he's been officially appointed. So, uh, that's coming along smoothly, so we have four strong candidates to be the town's, uh, board's project manager.
You know, I was just thinking, um, based on our historic experience with this project, uh, just for that, as a casual sort of a thing, maybe throw in a public forum just to see where the public's at, and what are you thinking, and this is a way of thinking, we'll start to do even more of that than we did last time, and just sometime in, you know, February, maybe, January, February, and just have it be a casual, uh, food, and. Try, can, you know, let's see what we see, and invite anybody who wants to come to talk about the, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah. I'll cer- certainly.
Do it up next, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, so, I just want to circle that, I'll have, I'll send this to you all electronically, but here is, um, the remainder of the, uh, year, um, uh, the, the draft cap. This is like a mini version of all the key deadlines, and it'll, it'll be electronic as well, so. We've already started, uh, the capital process, uh, the budget memo for departments went out already. We have three fiscal forms of what I've already mentioned to all of you, we actually tweaked one of the dates because of the executive session, the joint executive session schedule for next week, so. For the fifth, the fifth, the twelfth, and the nineteenth. The fifth, which is this Thursday, the program will be done, will be doing a tutorial on the five-year forecast, what's in it, and how, how we project going forward, so that'll be the core of the discussion, uh, this coming Thursday. Uh, the twelfth will be a schools, um, I think they're still trying to decide exactly what topics, but, you know, their goal is to, to, to discuss topics that are, you know, common, you know, whether it's special letters, population trending, or all that, off some information. And we'll be talking about both the twelfth and the nineteenth on the fifth, what the agendas will be. So, those are open to anybody, uh, so any member of the boards can come and, 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 and if this, if it's gonna be, well, we, we can post these as meetings, um, or, did we post this as a meeting?
I posted it, yeah.
That way, any of you can attend if you so choose and participate. There's no decisions made at these, it's just a lot of people that have conversation.
Location?
It'll be at the, um, thank you for reminding me about that, um, at the community room at the high school.
All, all of these?
All of these, where, where it's where the school committee normally meets.
Okay.
It's just, it's, it's a good, it's a.
All right, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what, that's the location, so, and they'll all be posted, they're all being posted.
How are they posted as fiscal forums by the time, if they're not posted as board of selectmen meetings? I don't want, I don't think we want.
No, no, they're, they're, they're posted as a public.
But, uh, Tracy's posted a meeting in case three of us attend and want to talk.
And, and other boards committees could do the same. Historically, um, the, the people who primarily attend these are people who are very engaged in the process, and I've had conversations with, among others, uh, Maggie, who's sitting in the audience, about getting more folks engaged in the spring, so we might try to do other random forums in the spring about the budget after it's been presented, and get more people engaged, uh, and try some novel fun, that, the conversation for how to make them fun. So, we'll, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna pick up the challenge, I know several people have talked about trying to do that. Um, some committees have that kind of fun videos, we might try to do something like that, just to get people engaged. You know, we have this great document that said everyone's not gonna read this all the time, so if you distill it and make it fun, it just helps, you know, again, get information to people.
It's a, just a point, a question of clarification, um, on the open meeting issue. These are gonna be also posted, uh, board of selected meetings, or?
No, we're not going to.
But, yeah, they'll be posted, yeah, they're gonna be posted as board of selected meetings just for the ability for all of you.
That's just what I mean.
Yes.
Right, yeah, that's, I just wanted to clarify that.
So, if three of us are here, you need to call it, I mean, I don't know if I'm gonna be here all these myself, but if three are there, just call yourself into session. Can, can anybody call that? Uh.
I don't think they did that way last time, I just post them as a public.
I was, I, I, I think is there, there's no, there's no, there, because there's no discussions, there's no, it's not a, it's not like you're attending another board meeting where there's a vote going on, this is just an informational session.
But if we speak.
Yeah, I, I think it's okay, because you're not, there's, there's no voting taking place, um, it's really just a, it's an informational session.
And, and when you post these, then specify, oh, okay, yes, specify that this is for information only, no voting, you know, just so, and this is kind of thing that, if you can make it.
Cover us if there's a problem, yeah.
We, we, I think we're using the same model we did two or three years ago.
And have the agendas been set off for that, I may have missed?
The first one, we, we were just finalizing it today.
Did I miss it? It's not that I've set out yet.
So, it's Thursday, so it had to be posted today.
Yeah.
So, it did get posted, so.
But the agenda's gonna be all right.
Yeah, the agenda is basically, it's the, the, the core of it is a tutorial on.
No, I'd just like to see the agenda, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Correct, yeah, I'll, I'll send that out to everybody. The twelfth, I'm trying to get the schools to determine, tell me what topics they're looking to discuss, and the nineteenth, we'll kind of circle back to the five-year forecast with updated information. By then, we'll have a little idea what the state's looking at, and then we'll also be talking about the ten-year capital plan, which I hope to present to all of you, a first cut of on the seventeenth, just for information purposes, where we are, what the FY twenty-one first cut of the capital plan looks like, that's what we tried to do last year, we're gonna do it again this year.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think it's helpful to clarify the, um, open meeting and people doing that, because I know some well-meaning citizens have had, uh, large public forums, which inadvertently turns out with members of committees in there, so we oughta make it so we can encourage that type of, uh, of meeting, at the same time, protect everybody from open meetings, and I think the idea of posting it, so we, we clearly say this is for informational, not for voting, so we don't run into that.
Okay, that's what we'll do, we encourage other committees to do the same, and also, I think that's kind of what we've been doing in the past anyways, but for some people are not familiar with that issue, you just said it, so that's well reiterated, yes.
Yeah, and I think we want to encourage open discussion of the whole committee.
Of course we do, and that's the whole idea of the forum, is we want people to be there. Like, this one should go on, these agendas should go on social media too, to say, come talk about this. I, I think you have a feeling, now that I think about it, it is gonna be on social media.
Might already be there.
Yeah, probably, they have already, yeah.
No, not that good. Finance on.
And, and just right up there for the, for the board members who've joined us this year, what we've started to do for the last couple of years is send out what's called a notice of intent to boards and committees who might have an interest in putting something on the warrant that'll go out in a week or so, just so we know, we have, and it, it doesn't commit them, just gives us some idea what the warrant will look like. For example, you know, Carrie, I'll file something for the, the change in the name of the board.
Yep.
Uh, we have the same thing with potentially the Board of Health, there's been a conversation, Dr. Lawrence has mentioned. Um, I know there's a couple of other things kicking around, I've, I've been working with the Open Space Committee, they have a couple of ideas, so. Um, that way, I, I can give you some idea in January of what's cooking out there. Um, the, the warrant will officially op, you'll officially open the warrant on the fourteenth of January. The citizen petition deadline will be in February, it's the nineteenth of February, that's a long way away. We generally have town council in, uh, as a, as a, sometime in either late January, early February, to help counsel any potential citizen petition folks, um, we've done that successfully the last couple of years, To help counsel any potential citizen petition folks, um, we've done that successfully the last couple of years, we actually had a couple people utilize the service last year, it was helpful. Uh, and then we tentatively do, uh, two or three, in this case, it's three tentative, big joint meetings, one on the water and sewer budget. And citizen petitions, one on the capital budget and CPC, and then one on the school budget. How we format those is still to be determined, the dates may change depending on our schedule, but it would generally fall in the format that we, we show here. Uh, and there's other dates on here that, you know, last day to get nomination papers, last day to reach the vote. Uh, we also do a, a town meeting forum which we've done for every meeting now for the last, I don't know, three or four years on TV. Uh, just going through the warrant for folks to, uh, inform people, and then, um, again, the meeting will be the fourth, then the election will be the ninth, so. You're, actually are posted to have meetings pretty regularly in February and March, because uh, uh, you may end up dropping a few of them, but they're already scheduled, um, just in case.
Yeah, just so the new board members know in March all leaves, uh, cancels.
Yeah.
You know, on duty, and, you know, we have to have, so several local meetings there. No passes permitted, no fraternizing with the public, just come to the meetings.
The, the, the goal is to have things wrapped up theoretically by March thirty-first, which is the last Tuesday, um.
We have to meet every week.
Well, well, so, we can, we do have a little bit of leeway going into, into early April if we had to. Because we've moved some of the heavy weightier stuff like capitals, actually, we've already, uh, we've already started conversations and they're gonna have their first meetings with departments, I think next month, which is great, so. And I think CPC series already started to hear a few things, or at least get some ideas, we're gonna see if they get that moving out too, so. But that's just, that just gives you an idea of the process, um, and, uh, again, as we get closer, I'll have better ideas of what the warrant's gonna start looking like. January twenty-eighth is, uh, will be the first joint meeting, that's with, uh, with advisory as well, that's where we present the, uh, at least the town side budget. The proposed town side budget for twenty twenty.
Okay, just, a question on the town meeting forum, which is on TV, which is great. I know in Hangum, they have, like, it open to the public, and I'm wondering if, if we could maybe keep the same TV format where, you know, you and Don and maybe. Whoever's usually up there, like, capital budget or whatever, is.
And have a live studio audience.
Is the panel, but have like a live studio audience, because I think so many people go there and, you know, I mean, one of the, one of the things we've gotten to a point at is having these nice town meetings. Where everything's really efficient, and it's because of all these meetings. Right. Where everybody's done a lot of work, but if you're new to town meeting and you get there, you're like, oop, they've already made their minds up about everything, well, yes, we have. But, you know, um, but this is an opportunity you, for you to come and, and listen to the, you know, the key people. Talk about where the votes are and why they're there and, you know, kind of just have it a little more interactive, just, just something to consider if, if it's technologically, uh, possible.
We, we have to do it, uh, we can either do it in the lot, well, I've talked to John about where we could do it down right, so yeah, we, we can talk about setting up something, um.
Just kind of walk through the warrant, yeah.
So, Diane, is it, you, you said contemplating that there'd be questions and answers, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
We can try, we're interested, we'll set something up, we can set that up. We'll just probably do it either at, uh, Wilka Commons or in the, if it's done on a, uh, not outside of school hours, we could do it at the, uh, Learning Commons.
Yeah.
That might actually be a nice setting if we could do it at.
I agree, 'cause sound is, I don't think sound, well, it's getting better at Wilka, but anyway, just something to consider.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'll, I'll, we'll work on it, like, it's time.
And you know what, it's like baby steps, maybe we'll get three or four new people, but maybe that'll become a tradition in town, that it can be very helpful for people, yeah, I like that.
Great. Exactly.
Great. All right, good, um, and again, there'll probably be updates to this, but this is the core, just, just to give everybody some idea of the process for the next four months, five months. And, um. It just, uh, so one of the, just a reminder to everybody that next Tuesday is a, the, it's, it's just an executive session, there'll be no public session with the school committee as posted for January, December, just so you, so.
Oh, yeah, everybody's aware of that, we have a meeting December, December tenth, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
It's just an executive session.
And it's just on those items. Okay.
Now, I, I lost that, what? We have an executive?
It was.
With school committee.
With school.
With the school committee.
Oh, okay, alright, alright, okay.
Just a reminder of that thing, it's only a executive session, it's not a public session.
That, right, okay. Right, I understand, sorry.
Uh, and the next public meeting is the seventeenth, um, and then I'll pass it off to all of you and you can talk about the seventh.
Okay, I'll, on the selecting comments, then, um, yeah, so, what we've decided to do is, you know, we've set our goals early in the summer and now it's, and, yeah. So we'll have a special meeting probably at Wil, we'll set off at Wilka as what we're visualizing this at, and we'll go over the, uh, the four or five goals and. Get reports on where we stand, and that's the opportunity to make any midterm corrections and just a good proper management, it'll be a good, a good session. It'll be for us to go over where we stand on our main four goals that we established for this year. And then we thought, uh, after that, that'll be for an hour and a half probably, so, and whatever, and that, that we would then go and bite to eat together, uh, as proof. And so, uh, we'll do that that night too, is what we thought we, if it's, seems like a good idea to everybody, yeah. And, and Chris will pick a place, maybe a local restaurant type thing, and we'll go and have sort of a casual time together and sort of do that as an end, nice thing to do. Did you wanna add something as to what we might do like that too?
Yeah, so I might, I think I had talked to all of you at a, at a meeting and, and, uh, about one of the, um, when I was at this leadership retreat back in June, um. We, we work with an author of a book called I Love Where You Live, and, and, and it's about really community engagement and all, and, and getting people to. Uh, it, to, to doing fun things in a community, um, so I have copies of the book for all of you, so, um. I could give it to all of you, maybe in advance, and you can read it a little bit, we can talk, um, and I, I, again, I know, I've talked to somebody who did it really bad, and it was, it was just a fun and engaging. We've talked about stuff internally with staff about, you know, trying to bring fun to things too. Uh, and I think it'll be just a great informational, uh, just a great kind of a, a different kind of workshop for us to informally to talk through.
So during that session, we can chat about the book that he's gonna provide us advance for our.
I'll bring, I'll give it out, I'll give it out for this meeting, so it's a very, it's a very easy read.
I love it, okay.
You know, we love that, we have a little book cover on it, yeah.
It's a very easy read, uh.
Yeah, so good, yeah, that'll be, it's that'll be that evening, go and begin, okay?
So we're working on a, um, uh, we're trying to stay in class somewhere.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Uh, but a place where we can have a little side room, so they're all places like that, so, we'll do the best we can, um, so, uh, and so we'll, we'll plan for doing it. I think we're doing it a little early that night anyway.
Six thirty, we'll probably start.
Yeah, and then so we'll, we'll try to, if that works, we're.
Yes, four meetings. All right, folks, that's it, over comment, uh, Jack?
Um, I think I, that, that I think we oughta have, consider setting up some kind of task force or whatever to coordinate the, the sewer and the water situation. I ran into a Hangum town official recently, the health department, and they, uh, they were talking about their interest in doing that, so. And I don't think we have a focused forum to, to do that, and I think that's something the board of selectmen, we ought to have some kind of, um, coordination so we all know what's going on. These are very, very crucial issues, the situat- the sewer pipe, um, Hangum is interested because of their, the water situation in, um. North Cohasset and the Hangum water, and there's a lot going on, and I, I think we need some focus so we can all understand it for the board.
I think a, a good way to address that is, is for us to actually take that up at the board level, and it'll be the, a good way to do that, but I think, don't we have on the agenda coming up? We have some stuff on this, we'll, on the agenda on the water.
Yeah, so we're, we're actually been working to get the folks from Hangum into a selectmen's meeting to give an update on their acquisition of the Burean system.
Great.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I know the Water Commission itself has, has been active i- i- in that too, so I think we're ta- we're trying to get that for the seventeenth. Uh, it's a similar group to what we s- you saw, uh, a couple of months ago, we had the town administrator in one of those departments, uh, and we're, it's just been trying to get schedules together. So I think we're looking for the seventeenth, uh, for that session.
Well, the problem is they work, excuse me, they work, they have their meetings the same night as you guys, so every time, yeah, I feel like we get a date, there's an issue, and they had to switch their meeting date, so.
Yeah.
Like, it might.
So we're, we're, we're going to, if we have to, we'll find another date, but we need to get them in to get an update. Uh, and I, and in this spring, the selectmen will be asked, so, so, Hangum had, uh, this acquisition process is gonna take, uh, probably a full year. Uh, so, at some point in the spr- early in twenty twenty, Hangum will be seeking this, the class of water selectmen's and making a, to make an appointment to, will be a rate advisory board for the joint water system. That's probably gonna come sometime late in the spring, um, so I, I do think that, um, that session will be very, uh, uh, important. I know that Kerry's liaison to sewer. Who's the water liaison?
I don't think we have.
You don't have one for water?
Yeah, we do.
You do? Is, are you the, the water liaison?
Well, that's Tracy, yeah, yeah, 'cause you're in town, you're the water liaison.
You're hiding.
I, I'm now the water liaison, but that's a good point, Chris, this is the type of.
I think you're the water liaison.
This, this is the type of, of information that I think is helpful, and my suggestion is that we might have some kind of forum where like the water and sewer and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And somebody who spoke in Hangum and spoke in the situat, so as a board, 'cause this is, we're, we're, this is important for us to get a handle on it. And I'd rather get a, a handle on it sooner rather than later.
Yep.
That's, and I think, Chris, what you said is very helpful.
How do we wanna do that then? Well, I think this joint meeting will be helpful, but how can we coordinate that then, if they've got the same thing, we'll have to do a special meeting?
We're, we're gonna, we, we have, and I know they need to get in front of, of the board and also the public, right, it's important. I also do think that, um.
So why don't we offer them, you know, in our next five meeting dates, to see if they'll go, you know, far and.
Yeah.
Say, would you, we'd like to have you, can you come to any one of these and see if they agree on it, if they do, let's put them in on the agenda, okay?
Just.
To start that.
Yep, just to add a finer point to that, I mean, that's, that's water, um, and then there's still, you know, the sewer.
Sewer, right.
And where the regional discussions stand, so I definitely think that's another, especially before, I mean, I think, I think well before, we need to know if there's any movement in that direction. Before we meet with water and sewer on the twenty-fifth of February regarding budgets, so.
Exact, that's, coordinate all these, I agree, Diane, hold on.
So we can do the water that way, but I thought under the sewer situation, don't we have sort of a task force working on that, isn't the, isn't, don't we have people working?
We, we, we did.
On that, they could give us a briefing at our meeting? Isn't the, uh, planning director working on it?
There's a number of folks, that, and, and, um, so we should probably talk, and we prob- we should, this should probably be on another agenda in, early in twenty twenty, in the, next month. Um, because we did have a very good regional meeting, uh, just a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, so let's do this, Tracy, on the, the last meeting in, in January, put on, you know, for twenty minutes, uh, we'll just put on the agenda. For us to have a review of the, uh, regional sewer opportunity, and Chris and I'll work out the language, and then Chris, in the meantime, figure out who it is that will present to us that update. Whether it be regional people, whatever, but you, you'll handle that, okay? So it takes care of the water and the sewer, okay?
Absolutely.
And those are good points.
Uh, 'cause one of the biggest issues on water is also the potential acquisition of the Cohasset North system rolling into the Cohasset Water system.
Yeah, well, that's why we wanna start having that discussion.
That's been laid on the table for the Kingham folks, and that's been something that we've been interested in from the very beginning, and I, I do think that they wanna tackle that at some point. Digesting, I think, this water company is, is taking even more than they realized, uh, just for procedure, they actually have hired someone. Who's a former town administrator in Franklin, tell, manage the process, so Dave's credit's been in regular contact with us, so. So, but okay, so we'll schedule those for.
Those two things are scheduled, good, Carrie?
Very excited about our lobster tree lighting on Friday night and then the Cohasset stroll on Saturday, it should be a great couple of days to get into the holiday spirit.
Excellent. Paul?
Um, two quick things, um, along, along to the water and sewer, thinking about, um, combining them at some point in the future, like a waterworks, and then have a single administrator for both. I know there have been enterprise funds, but someplace will have a waterworks administration as covering both aspects, so I don't know if that's a possibility. It may make things more efficient, and maybe more complicated because they're two independent enterprise funds.
Yeah, my phone's blowing up, yeah.
I mean, not to go back to the twenties, but, um, that may be one way to make it more efficient.
There's a lot of models, if the board wants to have, have a explore this.
We've discussed those before too as well, so we should have, we can put that out.
And you can just determine if you want, how do you, you wanna explore it, I thi- I think it's gotta take a little research, 'cause there's many models.
Well, there's also quite a lot to that, you know.
Correct, correct.
Well, we could put them on, on agenda to discuss.
I mean, there's no rush to it, but, but much like a governance in, kind of, a couple of months from now, maybe after we read the water and sewer and pair of marks on there as a.
Okay, then, so, so why don't we put this on the agenda, Tracy, for the first weekend, first meeting in March, will be a generalized discussion. In the meantime, Chris, maybe you could think about whether we have water here, so, or who we would have to, maybe, or some expert to talk to us on how the combinations look. We'll start the discussion and as Paul's, we'll do them in the first meeting in March.
So you have a super intended, in some places will run both, especially after we, we look at, you know, if, if North Situate, I mean, North Cohasset gets rolled into the system here, or if it doesn't, you know, that would. Give us, uh, you know, the first step.
Water and sewer issues are gonna only get more complicated, not less complicated, um, and, um, again, I think, having those conversations.
So we'll start a conversation in March.
Okay, got it.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, one of the quick things, um, I know there's a lot of emails going back and forth, if there's an email that someone responds to, it limits the other board members from commenting on it. So if something does come out and comes into your box, don't comment and send it back, just say received and do it that way, because it prevents a lot of communication from being forwarded. Um, so, don't comment on something that's something that may very well show up in the meeting, um, just from our open meeting point, just to keep it clean, that's all.
All right, Diane?
Couple of things, uh, Chris is probably gonna throw his pen at me, but do we have a update on, um, the ombudsman for the aquaculture issue? And is there, or should we be expecting some kind of, you know, kind of update on where things stand?
I think, uh, we'll probably do, we'll probably talk a little bit about the next meeting, situat, selectmen meeting tonight, um, in fact, probably, and I, I think they're scheduled to discuss this. The regulations in about forty minutes on our official posted schedule, I know there's some.
We could run down there.
That's right, let's hurry this up.
We have some representatives there tonight.
Okay, okay, all right.
So I think, I think the next meeting will have a little bit better idea, I, I also, uh, there's a lot of other moving pieces right now, so I think, yeah.
So, to your point though, let's put it in your bucket though, 'cause we have gone on a consultant as Diane suggested.
Yeah.
That we are gonna wanna have that person meet with us sometime in the next few weeks, I think we should wait like you're saying, 'cause things are going on, but, uh, that I do want, I think it's a good idea, let's do that.
Did, did we ever get a, a legal representation, I know we've talked about that, I know Paul Durensis has a lot of experience in this, and he, he at least should weigh in on it.
Yeah, I, I think we should, I think the conversation is whether or not we need to, to engage.
So what we'll do is in this discussion we have with the, we'll take, let's take that and discuss that as a board, but you should be thinking about that, and we all. I think part of what we had decided is we didn't wanna go into the legal as our front card right now, so. I think, things are happening in the next few days, let's see how this pans out then. Okay.
Thank you, and the, um, two other quick things, one is, um, the Affordable Housing Trust met yesterday, and if it's possible, Chris knows this, to put on our next agenda, the appointment p- potentially of special counsel. Just because there is some, there are some issues in our, um, declaration of trust document that we wanna have some expert on, um, Affordable Housing Trust. Kind of talk to the, talk to the committee and see, um, what our next steps might be, Chris, I mentioned it to Chris after our meeting yesterday, so, it's something that. If, if, and I, I, you know, the committee, the trustees are pretty, um, pretty certain that they did want special counsel, somebody that has experience with, um, AHTs. Um, to come in and, and just have a general conversation with us about what's possible within the constraints of our own bylaws, and then the, the declaration that we have to make and file before we can function. So, that's just a, an agenda item, and I don't wanna steal your thunder if you're gonna talk about the three officers who went down to Washington DC.
Uh, you, you can, or I can if you want.
If, yeah, if you have the information, yeah, I think it's pretty special, yeah.
It was put on, yeah, social media and stuff too, actually, for those who are on social media, there is, uh, um, uh, there's good videos and. Uh, of the, the three officers that we provided special recognition for, um, for their heroism in the event that occurred, you know, a number of months ago. Where a life was saved and so forth, they were, as I think we had said at that meeting as well, um, and then one of the things is that they were gonna get was, or they were gonna participate in is. Attorney General Bauer has a special program with line offices, uh, and it's line offices that are recognized for the ha- kind of heroism that the three officers from, uh, from, uh, uh. For Cohasset, uh, demonstrated, and today, or yesterday or today, uh, they are actually down there and, uh, they got a, and it's on social media, it's a really, that's professional presentation. They talked about each one of them and mentioned their names and, uh, what they accomplished, and Attorney General gave them an award, and they also, this video also of them laying, uh, a wreath at the, uh. Uh, I think it's the unknown, unknown soldier, and, uh, it's all very nicely nationally recognized, and so that's, you, you can see, uh, a lot of, there's been a lot of publicity on that too, so.
To the unknown.
We're all very proud of the three officers.
Oh, yeah.
They're pretty amazing, so.
And whatever, yeah, very amazing. So, okay, anything else?
Okay.
Okay, uh, minutes, and a motion for the approval of the eleven nineteen nineteen minutes, now it's.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. That's unanimous Tracy, uh, I don't have any topics from the last, uh, forty-eight hours, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, so.
Still moved.
Second.
And all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, no, this meeting is adjourned. There's no, you know.